The human have to go out and check it in wait. You can try. And it's not based off the internet, could we try another one on the radio? No. Cause you know how telephones and cell phones and all the working chairs, this is not that you can be close enough to pick it up. They take nothing in time. But it's not based off the internet, so even if your phone, if maybe it gets on for your phone, it can still pick up.
Tom, how many different brands meters do we have now?
Oh, I couldn't tell you.
You might know.
What, three or four tanks?
Three or four tanks?
Yes.
So our replacement system is difficult then?
Well.
We have, we have no replacements.
We have.
Yes.
We don't, we don't. And so this will actually standardize the type of meter that we have for newer homes, like a little thing they're putting in now. That little blue cap on top can replace a been existing meter.
If we replace the, it needs that other one, I mean, you can just replace the top instead of the whole meter, yeah.
Okay, next slide. Standby power. TCEQ has some guidance. And they obviously recommend that you have some type of standby power. The standby power requirements is really a function of how much elevated storage you have and the reliability of your electric system. You have a lot of elevated storage, so you're really good shape there, I think your electric system is pretty good, although there are outages from time to time. So standby power wasn't necessarily a big issue for us, although we want you to have it, we think you need it. But it's not something that you need at every water plant. So what we did is we came up with the idea of purchasing a mobile generator that you can move to whatever plant site might need it. And to be able to plug it in, throw it to a transfer switch and turn this thing on, you can power the whole site without any, without any power from Phelps. It requires some electrical upgrades at each one of the power plants, but that's not a big trouble at the water plant, that's a relatively minor deal. But that's a picture of a mobile generator there that's of the size that would probably be. Next slide. All right.
You have to, see, that's like a sewer plant, the sewer plant does have a generator for water, but this would only be for water.
We, we, we did consider whether or not survive one generator that could power all of our plants and the treatment plant. But the treatment plant has much different power requirements, they're much greater, there's a lot more equipment there. Plus, I believe TCEQ requires that it be located on set stationary, bolted down. And this is mobile, so it doesn't really match up with the treatment plant very well. And I think with the treatment plant, if something bad starts happening, you need power, you need it right away. And I don't think you're gonna wanna go try to find a generator and haul it to the site and then hook it up, so it means somebody's branch. Okay. Service areas. This is one area where the hydraulic model that we did was indispensable. It's really interesting what we, we're able to find out about the system here. This illustration here shows the elevation of the city's three.
We don't have that.
Elevated storage tank.
It's not in there.
This one slides, it's added after.
Oh, yeah, it is in your package, but it's not on your PowerPoint. It was a, it was a last minute.
Is it dead?
It's an exhibit, yeah. This is kind of an illustration that shows the elevation of your three elevated storage tanks.
Tom, can you explain why the having three different elevations is a defect or an efficiency?
Yes. I'll get to that, I'll get to that. The middle one area is your tallest, that is B Street. Okay, it is your tallest tank. And what we believe and understand about your system is that the area served by B Street is actually an isolated service area today. Kind of functions in its own, it doesn't get any water from any other place. It's the tallest tank and it runs pretty much on its own. That's not true about hospital and Plaza. Those two areas work as one, so to speak. And that one big area is controlled by the tallest or the highest water surface elevation in the hospital tank. And you can, you can tell by this line, we took it right over to the Plaza tank. And you'll notice that when hospitals full, Plaza's only about a third full, so you have a lot of elevated storage there that is today used. Cause you can't hold up. Cause Vito tried to fill up the Plaza tank and comes spilling out of the hospital tank. Now, if you look at those three tanks, you have, you come to the conclusion that somebody designed this system so that the three areas were supposed to work on their own in an isolated manner. And for some reason Plaza and hospital never got isolated. So as part of the improvements that we're recommending, we wanna go ahead and create that Plaza isolated service. So that in essence you'll have three independently running systems. And it's just a matter of closing valves to make that happen.
So you're wanting to, to go back to more of a radial feed than the loop feed?
Go to the next slide, I've got a picture. Here's a picture of what the three areas will look like when we're done. This is B Street, it's pretty much isolated now, everything on the east side of 181 pretty much runs off of B Street today. And then this is the hospital Plaza system now. We wanna kinda create an isolation line somewhere in here to isolate those two systems, so that Plaza runs on its own, hospital runs on its own. Now, what that does is this. Right now, the pressure range, the operating pressure range for this one big system is somewhere around thirty PSI up to about seventy. Okay, which is a little wide. That means you got some areas that got low pressure, some pockets of low pressure, then you got some area down where the, where the pressure's high. And we don't want high pressure either because people's hoses burst, pipes burst. So what we're trying to achieve is a more efficient operating range, which is about forty to sixty PSI, more or less. And once we isolate that system, create a separate system for Plaza, Plaza's gonna work a whole lot better. I don't think you're gonna really notice anything in the hospital area, but you'll notice it in Plaza. I think Lou, was it you was telling me that the second floor of the Holiday Inn had real low water pressure?
Yes.
What's exactly why?
Holiday Inn is located at one of the highest points in the city, add the second floor, and go back, go back a slide, Jonathan? And you add the fact that you only got a third of your tank full in the Plaza tank, that's why. That's why you got a little pressure in Plaza.
Now, wouldn't it be more efficient to have all three of them loop fit? Because I know the, at the B Street, Holly has the lowest pressure out of all three of the sites.
Right, yeah. Forward a slide, Jonathan? One of the, one of the.
My understanding, I think the Plaza, I mean, the B Street is probably operating at about twenty-five PSI.
It's gonna have the highest pressure in town, yeah. Yeah, now, once we isolate the system, the natural.
The B Street has the highest pressure of all the other ones.
Now, a, a, a question to ask yourself is, once we isolate the system, what happens? In one system, if the well goes down or it can't produce water, how do you get water from other service areas to the one you need? Well, it's pretty much the same way you do it today. Remember when the Plaza well went down? Well, hospital had to work really hard, but it was able to get water, you know, we call it, we just kind of through the distribution network and not necessarily through any one pipe, okay? If something bad happens in one of the service areas, all we do is go out, open up valves. And the water will flow.
So B Street could have been.
Yeah, it could have been on this side.
Yes, they could feed back to hospital, B Street can feed back to hospital.
But B Street doesn't have a valve or a.
Yeah, so if something bad happens in B Street, you will have trouble feeding water up. And that's why we are currently working on what I would call a transmission main concept. That will allow you to ship water from one water plant to another. I don't really address it in this assessment because it's only an idea at this point. We haven't really been able to take it further and understand where it would be, what it would look like, but that's something that we're all looking at.
Wouldn't it be just as, as simple as, as kind of lining up the tanks of the Plaza and the B Street? Cause it's pretty much separated by the highway?
Yes, down the highway would be an excellent location for what I would call a water transmission main. But there may be a more economical solution to that. And that's, it's, it's an idea that we're kind of bouncing around, but we haven't really sorted it out yet, but we're working.
Mr. Turner, that issue that Lou was talking about, the Holiday Inn.
Yes.
If you put more water in the tank, does that give them more pressure?
Oh, yeah.
So is that something we've done or to solve the problem?
It's something we wanna do.
Well.
Can't do it yet.
Okay.
Until the ground storage.
We need like a pay valve or something to hold up, you know, not, not to feed at this hospital though.
So it's coming?
Yeah.
The, the, the ground storage tank has nothing to do, it's, it's all based on the elevated storage tank. Now, what we've gotta do, as I mentioned, the only, the way we isolate the system is to turn the valves. Well, we oughta make sure we got valves in the right place and we gotta make sure that they work. So it's, it's not as simple as you said.
Did, did we end up purchasing that, that piece of equipment that will exercise the valves?
Yes.
Has it been used?
They haven't used it because they're afraid that they might break the valves, you know, since they're. I mean, it, they, it was something that, oh, we need, we need this, this tool, we need this tool, but yet it's like, okay, now we're afraid to use it, we have it, now we're afraid to use it.
Well, both of you are right. You bought it, they should use it, and they should use extreme caution. Yeah, we're just gonna have to work through that. All right, next slide. Here's some other water system upgrades I wanna talk about, the Oak Hills interconnect. I think we met with Oak Hills back in December and we talked about potentially connecting to their sixteen, sixteen inch main on 181 ends right there to McCoys. And what this connection could be is, one, an additional water supply to the city of Florisville if they ever needed it. And then, two, if there was ever some kind of emergency, there could be a water supply there. It's a relatively easy connection to make. It's simply, we have four across 181, we have a main that's on the west side of 181, there are mains on the west. And it's probably a two or three hundred thousand dollar construction item. It's a great idea, I think the only issue I have with it is, we don't necessarily need it. From a water supply perspective, this is something that we addressed when we did your master plan, you have plenty of water supply for the future. We don't necessarily need it. Once we get all these improvements in place, we'll have standby power, you've got plenty of elevated storage, so I just don't think you need this. If this is something that you wanna do, I think it's, it's well offered to the future somehow. But it's still a very, a very viable approach. Water wells. You have three water wells in your system, of course, the Plaza water well was just rehabilitated last fall. You still have wells at B Street and Hospital. There's really no records to indicate when the last time either of those wells was rehabilitated or if, if they've been rehabilitated. This is something that should occur at least about every ten years. So we're gonna suggest that you go ahead and rehabilitate both those wells sometime in the next year or two, starting with Hospital.
How much money are we talking about per?
Uh, per's about a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, more or less. Ground storage tanks, we've talked about Plaza, I don't wanna beat that dead horse, but that's obviously gotta be replaced. Your ground storage tank at Hospital's in good shape, as long as you maintain it. I don't think you'll have to do anything to it over the next ten years or so. The B Street well, B Street tank is a, is a bolted steel tank, just like you have at Plaza. I think it's got about ten years of life left in it and then you're gonna have to replace it. But that's kind of a wait and see situation.
We didn't install an additional motor there, right? Is that?
Yes, we put the third motor in.
And it's being an obstacle.
It's been, it's been.
Elevated storage tanks, they're in good shape, you got plenty of storage, they're in pretty good shape. Might have to take care of a few nicknames here and there, but they're in good shape. The electrical instrumentation controls and alarm systems. We've taken a look at the electrical systems at all three plants. They're in fairly good working order. I, I think the next big rehab of the electrical system is probably ten years off. But that's kind of a, you know, to evaluate every year, but I think you're good for another ten years or so. Alarm system, right now, the, the, the operators have a pretty crude alarm system. If something bad happens, they get a, they get an alarm on their phone and they rush to the plant site, try to figure out what's going on. We would like to put in a better alarm system that gives them some diagnostics. When something bad happens, on a handheld phone, they'll be able to tell what's going on at the plant without actually having to be there. And that's a relatively inexpensive system, very useful. It's, it's a very small portion of an overall SCADA system. I don't know if you've heard that term before, SCADA, but that's basically top end SCADA would allow you to run your whole system from a desktop computer somewhere. We don't think you need that, your system's not that big, it's not that complex, and you can get to a water plant pretty quickly. So we're, we're just wanna enhance that alarm system. Okay, next. Standish elevated storage tank. All right, I've got bits and pieces of information on this. This is the city's oldest tank, it was taken off by in sometime nineties?
Nineties.
Okay. And as far as we can tell, it's, it's been there and there's really been no maintenance on the tank since that time. It's out of operation. We had our structural engineer go out there and take a good look at it, cause I wanted to know how long could that tank just stand there without any maintenance and still be relatively safe? And his answer was five to ten years. And that's somewhat of an informed opinion, just based on his, his ability to visualize the structure. If you want a more accurate answer, you would need a very expensive and detailed study. But anyway, five to ten years was good enough for me. Of particular concern structurally is that picture on the right. The tank has four legs and these steel plates are bolted to a concrete foundation with four bolts that'll look like this. This was probably the better looking one. But as you can see, there's a lot of rust. And rust is a deterioration of the structural capability and it's getting kind of bad. If the tank's gonna fail anytime soon, that's probably where the failure's gonna occur. So if you wanna leave the tank there more than five to ten years, there's gotta be some kind of structural repair done there at the foundation where it, where it's bolted superstructure.
How much would, how much would it cost to dismantle it?
Let me get to that. What we did is we, we did a little bit of thinking and trying to figure out, well, what should we do? This is. Obviously, you could do nothing, you can just let it, let it sit there, let it, let it decay over time. And then at some point in time, you know, take it down. You can have it removed, and there's two ways of removal. One is what I would call demolition and recycling. Where you would hire a demolition contractor to come in, he would take it down piece by piece. And he would sell off this deal, recycle that, that offsets his cost of taking it down. Drawbacks, I understand that it has lead paint on it and that would have to be remediated before it can be held outside. It's not easily disassembled and most of the structure is put together using rivets and that makes things a lot more difficult. So not necessarily an easy tap to take it down, but there's people out there who do it. The other more interesting option is to sell it to somebody. Whether there's actually a market for people who buy water tanks, take them down piece by piece and put them up somewhere else.
Can you tell me how, how folks did theirs?
No, I do not know.
They just, they just moved theirs probably about six months ago, I guess, or two or three years.
Did they show it to somebody or was it a demo?
I'm not sure, I just know that the crane was pulling it up and moving it, moving it up. They were just, I know, I know it was in worse condition than this one, the catwalks were deteriorated and everything like that, so.
Now, the, the water tank is probably more than fifty years old. And so it probably has.
I know that they have some.
It probably has some historical damage. Okay, it's, it's, it's a landmark, people recognize it, it's associated with Florisville. So if you're gonna take the tank down, there needs to be some historical studies, documentation, anything like that. But not, not instrumentally. The only, the only practical use that we could come up with was as some part of a reuse system. Theoretically, you could pump your effluent from your treatment plant, store it up here and, you know, use it as part of a distribution system. People could drive up to it, try to type. I have no idea if that's economically feasible, it's just an idea, I don't know if this is. It, it's probably not a good idea, but I just, I just wanted to throw that out, that was the only practical use that we could.
Someone had posted something like that on Facebook and put Texas rain gauge, because all the rain people.
At the end of the day, I think the best solution is just to take it down, piece by piece, shut it for scrap.
How much money are we talking?
I do not know how much that costs, but we'll be working on it. At the end of the day, I think that's probably the best solution. Okay, next slide. All right, now we're gonna get into some of the more administrative regulatory operations stuff. This is, these are improvements, but not physical improvements. First one is water system mapping. You know, we've got a really good start on mapping the system and we've got all the information gathered, gathered into the computer. But there's a whole lot missing. And a city needs to know exactly where their valves are, where their meters are, where their fire hydrants are, where their lines are to properly operate and maintain the system. So there's still some work to be done in getting a good map of the water system. Second thing here is a water monitoring plan, not a particularly big deal, but this is just a plan that you put on file that TCEQ requires, it just shows how you go about doing your water sampling from source to cap. As far as we know, Florisville doesn't have one, we can help put it together pretty easily. Not a big deal. Routine maintenance plan, this is something that's already underway, we're, we're putting this together. But basically, we're breaking the system down into all the components and we're making recommendations on how to, how to properly maintain each component. What do you do, what's the frequency, spare parts, things like that. So that's something that's already in the works. This fourth one here, sanitary control easement. Every well is supposed to have a one hundred and fifty foot radius sanitary control easement. And what that does is it prevents, it prevents industrial uses of property close to the well or any uses that might produce a hazard of. So what we did is on all three of your wells, we drew a one hundred and fifty foot radius, just to see what it looks like. And those, the three drawings are, are in your book, this is just one of them. This is B Street, here's the well, we drew a hundred and fifty feet around it. You're looking good on that one. That's not the case on Plaza. Part of that concrete plant is within a hundred and fifty foot. So we're gonna have to deal with that somehow. And then on Hospital, a little bit of land, I think on the east side, is in a hundred and fifty, but there's nothing in it, it's just, it's just past or something. Now, like. It, it could be that those easements exist and were filed and recorded when they did the wells. If we can produce that, then we're, we're good to go. If we can't produce it, then it's something that we're gonna.
Don't shake your head, Lou. Don't shake your head.
That relates you, right, Lou, I mean, that definitely relates me. But that, that is something that we're gonna have to involve the attorney to make sure that we have. But if we can go back to the water model plant, monitoring plant, how does that follow my, that you already think we have to mail out on time of July?
Some of the confidence.
Yeah, that, that is results of your testing, that you're just producing to your customers, to TCEQ, just an informative, it's on plan itself.
So you're gonna help us prepare that so we can be in time? Cause it's out, it's coming July, so they're gonna help us put it together. They'll try to put them in to send out, we'll just mail out, so they're gonna help us, because they're.
That says that we have superior order?
There you go. Well, Ms. Turner's gonna put it together and she has a PE license, so she's gonna make sure that it says what it's supposed to say legitimately.
Next slide.
I like that.
Go to the next slide, please, please. For administrative stuff. Expansion of your water CCN, now go back, Jonathan. Your, your CCN is this off color part here. And as you can see, your city limits has grown beyond your CCN and you are serving people outside of your CCN. So at some point in time, hopefully sooner than later, that CCN needs to be amended. And that's an application of TCEQ, that's an area study, blah, blah. But that's something that should be pursued. My advice would, would be to go out and acquire in your CCN all this, what I would call gap area. You're surrounded by three or four different water supply corporations. I would go out there and try to get whatever's in the gap.
Fill in the line.
Next slide. Water rate study. We're suggesting a lot of improvements. You're considering taking on debt, this is serious changes to your overall finances when it comes to the water system. That affects rates, so at some point in time soon, you're gonna need to, to relook at your rates. Water system impact fee. You do not have one in place, the law gives you the right to put one into place. This helps you recoup the cost of new development. And if you don't doubt in my mind, then you should have one. And it's a probably a good time to start doing it. Water leak study. Your system does leak. I don't know how much, but it does. Don't feel bad, all systems do leak. If, if your system leaks somewhere near with a five to ten percent, you're actually doing pretty good. I got a feeling you're tired, but I don't know that for a fact. So I am suggesting a leak study, but not for another three or four years. Once we get some of the old mains replaced, get the valves fixed and the fire hydrants fixed, get the meters in place, then do a leak study.
So leak in every couple of that. Every street corner, for every patchwork.
Next slide. All right. USDA loan, what? Well, Ms. Turner asked me, was, after you look at all the improvements to the, to the system that are needed, she asked me to kind of prioritize and give it, give you all an opinion of what I think should be done for about a three hundred, three, three point five billion dollar cost. And that's what we did. And what we came up with for priorities was replacing aged and small mains, and that's about one point six million dollars. Citywide meter replacement, that's about a million dollars. Creating the hospital and Plaza service area zones. Frankly, the hundred thousand dollars is a wild gift, cause we really don't know. It just depends on how, how good the valves are, if they're in the right place, so it's just kind of. So it's just kind of a placeholder for now. Water plant standby power and aeration, about the two hundred thousand dollars. Let me stop here, because I didn't really talk about aeration. Every one of your water plants has a, an aeration chamber on top of the tower. They all kind of look similar. We don't think they're working very well. Uh, we think the water's just passing through them so fast that there's just not enough time for the oxygen to mix with the water and release the hydrogen sulfide. So what, uh, we're recommending is that, is that we actually put air diffusers in each one of the ground storage tanks. And what this does is it blows millions and millions of, of air bubbles into the water. Okay, there's a lot of surface area, and a lot of oxygen gets introduced into the water. And when that water, when that oxygen gets into the water, it reacts, uh, and the hydrogen sulfide is released as vapor into the atmosphere and out the vents. And at the end of the day, what this does is it helps get rid of a lot of the smell that people complain about. Uh, and this is occurring in a tank where there's static water that's not moving, so it's gonna work a lot better.
What about the smell when you set things out of the tank for the tank though?
It goes into the atmosphere. So you won't, you won't, uh, you'll have probably more smell around your water plants, but at the tap where people drink, it should be a whole lot better.
People tend to complain that the sink works getting out of the shower.
You know, the, the taste, uh, it's, I think the taste will improve, but that is a matter of opinion. Everybody here will drink a glass of water and have a different opinion on whether the taste improved. So I can't quantify that. I think it will improve, but I, I can't say how much.
Do you know what? When you go to a restaurant and you ask for water, different restaurants have different taste of the water.
It, it all depends on your source. Now, we, uh, you, you can fix that. Uh, you can do, uh, a blending study and mix. It's, it's very expensive to get a consistent quality tasting water that's relevant to the system. Something you can pursue if you want to, but it's, it's costly. Basically, we would have to connect all three wells, pump it to a central location, mix it, treat it, and pump it back out. So it would be a pretty significant modification to your overall system.
The ultimate goal here is going to be to try the hard stuff and what we can do to provide quality water for our citizens. That is the major concern.
And I think we're going an awful long way towards that with the improvements in here. You're getting rid of your bad pipe, uh, you're fixing valves and stuff, you're not doing wet. Uh, we're, we're doing hydrogen sulfide treatment in the tanks. That's a lot of improvement.
Now, that first cost that you have, is that where we're going to be replaced in the downtown area? So.
Yeah. Now, I, I, I wanna be careful. You know, that, that purple area that I showed you? That's a starting point. I'm not saying we could do that whole box for one point six million, but that's, that's where we start. We'll have to do some thinking about where to, where to put the money, uh, so to speak, uh, but it'll go a long way. All right, um, Hospital on B Street, while we have the location, I've got two hundred and fifty thousand in there for both wells. Uh, and then the Plaza ground storage tank demolition and replacement, got about three hundred thousand dollars in that. So total program, uh, is about three and a half million dollars. That is simply a number that I got from, uh, Ms. Turner. Uh, if the number went up, I could find more stuff to do. If the number goes down, we would have to re-prioritize. But it's just a, a budget figure that, uh, kind of recognizes where we are at. I think, I think these improvements would, would probably take in the neighborhood of three years. We're already kind of starting, we're already working on the PER. It's due, uh, August second. Uh, by the time we got engineering documents, bid documents, contractors, contracts. Sorry. Yeah, we, uh, while you were out of the room. When you were out of the room, we were gonna go negotiate. Uh, seriously, no, we, we did. Uh, USDA has a, a milestone in mid-August where if they have the engineering reports, the environmental reports, and they can make a decision as to whether we commit. Uh, and, uh, August first was the last drop down bid date, and, and that's, we can't do July, but there's just too much to.
So, so one of the things we've done, and we met with, because we all talked about the USDA, so we met with Hal and Betty Soto. Can you remember how it was?
Nielsen.
Oh, Nielsen ratings. Oh, I like that word right now. So, so we, we, we talked about this. I mean, USDA blessed us with the highest award in the great state of Texas to Thor'sville. They think we can do this. And actually, Tom and I went to Austin when we were starting to see to help us push through the ESG to 10. So he was there. USDA wants to fund these kind of rural projects. They are willing, ready, and able. And those were the people who came to our thing on the eleventh, said, we're ready. Here we have to send me the next project. I'm like, okay. So here's the next project. And so what we're hoping to do is to come up with these ideas. We need to have this work done. It'll give us the infrastructure. It'll give us the start. And hopefully, as he talks about every year, replacing a mono pipe, that can be funded when you do your impact fee. So the impact fee impacts our system. That money should be used to help maintain the system. So it doesn't come off like general fund. That's hopefully what we're trying to do. And Mr. Evans said, I said, well, how much? And he says, here, we can do this kind of thing. You just come up with a project, and we can do it. So we came and had Hal, Nielsen, to come and look and say, preliminary, what is it? And so the engineer came and we met, and we did our thing, and they said, yes, there was nothing that we threw at them, and they said, we couldn't fund it, legitimately said, apply. So one of the things that's on the agenda is, we need to know, do you all really want to go out and apply for this application for this water for USDA? Because then there's an engineering, there's an application fee, the mayor needs to sign all this wonderful paperwork. So those kind of things is what we need to be able to do to say, if you really want to proceed to go forward, because if you see, he set a deadline, August. But they said, that's when the PR is done, and that's what get us going. No.
They, they get you in this fiscal year.
Yeah, and we've done a lot of some of the work, because a lot of stuff that, and, and our engineering has, they have a report, so a lot of stuff is already there. We have to do a water rate study. We're doing a water rate study and a, and a sewer study, and Connie's been saying we have to separate the two, so I'm separating. We're adding up along the way. So we're all poised to do that, but I need you to vote to say, yes, apply, and we'll get ready to go forward. And then we can bring it back to you what we want to do for the next step, which is why we have the application and the agreement. And, and the funding's there, so it's not a matter of if they will award us. We just have to prepare a package that can be approved for then to move forward with the award. They can't tell me anything.
Until they finish the application.
Until they finish the application and do all the numbers and they plug it in. Hal brought out his little laptop, and he's like, let's plug it in. I was like, oh, wait, I'm not ready yet. I'm not ready, because I haven't done all the reports. But they're ready to fast track this. The USDA has had a bad track record of awarding these wonderful programs, and it never gets started. It never gets done. They have this money sitting up there. It just never. We, we're gonna, we're gonna get that money. We're gonna spend that money. We're gonna use that money correctly. And M and S, right? M and S is gonna focus on our water. They're in charge of our water. We can go forward with the water in the consistency, hopefully, we get us to where we are. And still, I think it's less time, though, on the water repayment.
Is it?
Thirty years?
Forty years. Forty, and about two percent.
It's twenty years instead of the forty on the sewer. So it's twenty years, because I know it's a less time period to pay it back. Not yet. We've got, one of the things. To do a rate study, we're hoping to do that, and Mr. Gonzalez, Rowell, is coming in. They, he did our, he did our study, he did our study before. He's coming, we have, we've been in contact with him. He's coming in. He's been in Austin at a meeting. So he's coming here to do our rate study.
For, for your rate study and for your water system impact fee, you'll need a ten-year CIP. The beginnings of that CIP are in your packet. Uh, I've not plugged in any dollar figures yet, but I have got some relative timeframes that we're gonna start working on as, as this evolves or stuff, filling that stuff up. So, uh, you won't need to do any more engineering study.
If I may plug in with the date that Tom's got and the men who's got it, uh, what happens in August, money goes back to Washington. It goes back to the pool. And what these guys and gals that came down here are trying to tell us, they didn't tell us the rest of the story, but what they were trying to tell us is that the oil's spent in Texas. Well, no, it will back to the central pool, and it'll be distributed to those states which have show-ready projects. And Texas has had a fairly bad reputation of not getting their portion of formula because the projects have not been ready. And that's why we got the spec, not we, the state got this special program to accelerate the thing that they call Bill Texas. So if you don't have a project like Tom's talking about, ready for the P E R, with your application on August one, that money goes back to, guess who? Name I just threw on. And goes back to Kent. And then Kent will redistribute to those states that have projects ready, because the objective of USDA is to get it all expended before the end of the fiscal year. To somebody, to someone. And so it's either you or somebody else.
Well, we're, we're gonna be ready, but I can't proceed and do an application and pay him all that money to do a P E R unless you all agree and are ready to move and to go.
And it's gonna be on the, on your agenda for the eighteen.
I can put on the agenda for the eighteen, because you all, yes, if you all are, are, if you go to that. I mean, I've, I've done the homework. We've done the diligence. I mean, we, we even got ahead of ourselves and had Hal and, and Benny come in here to talk about that project as well, as we're running these simultaneously, and Helen was in that meeting, and Connie was in that meeting. So we're, we're, we're ready to, we're ready to walk the task. I just wanna make sure at this point, I'm at a point now, that you all have to say, yes, do your votes, and then we can keep going.
No, we're not voting right now.
On the agenda for the eighteen.
We're in the agenda for the eighteen. And, uh, you, he has to prepare some kind of engineering thing, right?
I've gotta get you, uh, an amendment for the P E R.
Yeah, so he's gonna use that, and then I would need something to say that we can apply for the application, so I'll have that, so we can give that to.
It's two items, right? It's two different items. Their, theirs and, and the.
It, it's needed. We have, we are perfect. I mean, because one of the things that Hal said, I think he went to school with you, close to you, Hal.
Hal, he went to Utah, yes.
That Thor'sville is perfect. We, we are less than ten thousand people, so that puts us in a category check. We are close to a large urban area that gives a lot of money and has, okay, so we are rural areas, that check. We're long a, we're impacted because of the Eagle Ford sale check. We are diverse community check. It's kind of like, ooh, we are the model culture child.
We're in the sweet spot.
Definitely. You know what?
The USDA sweets spot. We're an eligible.
So we, we need to be able to do this in August of the timeframe.
Have we accomplished it in the, in the tiny, in the tiny.
You can have it ready by August.
Well, you can have this P E R done.
In the, on the sort of up, uh, loan slash grant, has all that cost already been built into the, into the water bill? Or are we gonna continue?
The rate, the, the rate study is for that.
The rate study, the, those rates will not stay as they are. They will increase. But what we're going, what Rowell will help us do is help us to, uh, slowly introduce along. It won't be any great, I don't anticipate right now any great leaps and bounds jumping.
Because I know there's been, what, two or three?
Three, two on water and one on sewer.
Three on sewer.
Okay, and we're still not done with the sewer? So then we'll have another increase for the.
Well, that, the previous study rate that was done was done based on three million five hundred dollar loan out of the USDA. We ended up with almost ten million, so a rate study needs to be done, so we can go ahead and increase the rate to accomplish that. And he's gonna do that sewer rate, so he, at the same time, he's gonna do the water rate, so it is going to be there already.
But we, we can't, we, we're gonna, we're gonna be a slow increase.
Slow increase, yeah.
Slow. It's not, I'm talking, I'm talking five, six years of period time, as we gradually till there's no big, you know, so you're not gonna go to.
So you don't have rate shock.
I, I don't want, you might be going to a state.
Because we had an increase, what the, the increase was done in last? Two years.
You've had two years.
Two years of increase.
And, and then the first payment for the sewer USDA loan is not done until, I believe, a year after the sewer plant is, is completed. So we have time.
Yeah, twenty eighteen is should be completed, twenty nineteen when the first payment is due. And in the letter of condition that's required, uh, they're requiring us to have like a payment in the, in, you know. They're giving us ten years.
To get that.
To get that payment.
To establish your reserves.
To establish your reserves is a ten-year period. So there in a hurry to, to make sure that we have reserves, so we're in a, we wanna make sure that it's slow and steady. Slow and steady ones are right, so that, so we wanna make sure it's slow and steady, with no sticker shock, no sewer, and no water shock either. But going back to the, one of the things that we're putting there is the meter replacement program. That's definitely going to be, as we say, this system is adequate. USDA wants to make sure that the services pay for the improvements. They don't, they're not looking at your envelope taxes. They don't. Want, they want to make sure that your rates pay for it. I said to one of the kids when I went to junior high, I told somebody, you know, I said, we're gonna pay in forty years. How long are you gonna be in forty years? They said, fifty-two. I'll be at a nursing. So I'm like, oh, my goodness. Somebody need to roll it right now. So, so they, but they wanna make sure that it's not gonna impact taxes. It's all based on the water rate. That's why we need to have adequate systems recording it, remove all those leakage, because we still have to pay for that water. Those are key things. That's what they're looking for. They wanna good system, but they wanna a highly performing system without system deficiencies. So I'm looking for a consensus, because we're, can't think of it.
So we have sewer? We have water? When are we gonna fix the streets?
We're gonna the streets. We're gonna the streets. Right now, it's all about water and M and S.
So what you would end up with is two enterprise funds. You'd have the sewer fund as an enterprise fund, and the water fund as an enterprise fund, and each would be separately structured for probably rates.
And, and is it your goal that, uh, you don't have to use general funds to, they pay for them, so the systems pay for themselves at the end of the day? Uh, I, I have a question, uh, for you, Mary. Uh, you mentioned the taste of the water, and I know it's important to you. Uh, and from an engineering perspective, it is a, it's a doable thing to improve the taste of the water. Uh, it, it does take some work and some money, and, uh, I just would like a little better direction from you as to whether that's something you want us to pursue or not.
I think it's something.
A lot of people, I'm gonna tell you, are not drinking our city water. They're all bottled water, and I don't like seeing that. When, when I lived in Laredo, I came home because I loved the water here. I can't say the same about you. Some restaurants, I can drink it there.
I would say that it probably has to do with the smell, when you have an open cup, and you're, and you're taking a drink, you can smell the, the sulfur.
Well, maybe we could address the issue of the smell, and then if there's still an issue with the taste, then.
I'm thinking like what he says, if he starts doing all this stuff.
Well, that could be part of your P E R.
I would certainly address takes later. Whether you do it now or later, doesn't, doesn't really make it.
Some of the things that you're gonna be doing, I think, we might.
What's that?
The, the aerators that were, we have, they're all not working right.
Compare your water to. Bigwood?
Riverbend has good water. That's the difference.
Fluoride.
Right?
The fluoride has come up. Uh, we, we talked internally about whether or not to bring, even bring up the fluoride issue. It's just very controversial. Some say it's good, some say it's bad. Uh, we.
We used to do it, but none more.
We just left it out. If you want fluoride in your water, there needs to be an injection system.
Just add another hundred gallons of chlorine, we're good. Yeah, another 100 gallons of chlorine were good.
Well, I know it's been all over the news. I've seen it several times in the news about the, there's a big controversy on, yeah. And it's, that it's not good.
Maybe it's something later on.
Okay. For now...
This is, this is basics tonight. Tom, you had said that you were gonna put diffusers on the new tanks?
Yes.
So that might work a lot better.
It, it should significantly reduce the smell.
Yeah.
And so the $3.5 million is just a target. And you see, he said a target cost because when he really gets into it and he finishes P R, it may come in something a little different and we'll come back and look at it again and see how we want to do with our comfort zone with our rate study. We'll have by that time, we can see how much to do and we can totally... I think, Eric, I'm gonna use your term plug and play. We can say, "Okay, if we do this, this is the rate. If we do that, so we'll get exposed." When it comes to that point, do a plug and play. You know, if you go, if we get along for $3.5 million, this is what the rate schedule, the structure would look like. We do four, this is what it looks like. That kind of plug and play and we can see and make those kinds of decisions at that time.
Yeah, I want to say that these things that we've talked about, we've been talking about them for many, many years. But the council's never been proactive or been aggressive in raising rates or raising taxes to enforce a lot of those things. So if the council was in agreement, I think we'd move forward with these things to put floors at a different level.
We need to. Because of that same reason, they never got done, right?
You're gonna still continue hearing the same complaints over and over again. I mean, that, I complain a lot.
I think just so you better know that I'm getting better water.
But the U S D A is gonna give you an opportunity to give you a cash infusion to do the work. So that we can pay, you know, pay for it over time rather than, you know, us trying to save up the ton of money and then do it. It would be really hard to maintain the system, trying to maintain it and make all these major improvements.
The resources are there, why not use them?
They're there, they're here. And they're called, we're not begging them. They're not gonna, they're open, you got another project, where they got a project for us. So much so, they, they're coming on site to be able to do that. Betty comes here to see us.